Please, six o'clock. Like to review and approve the minutes on the January ninth.
So move.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor? State.
I have to abstain.
Lynn.
Bill. Any public comment out there tonight?
Public out there.
We've got three ladies out there, they could say something if they want. Uh, student advisory council, I guess.
It's such a limited thing, I told you.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay, right, unfinished business.
I think you finished, I think you missed my financial statements.
Oh geez. Sorry Patty.
I mean, we can go right past it if you'd like.
Sorry.
Um, we have thirty-one warrants tonight signed, um, that were emailed to you for your review, totally one million, six oh two, nine sixty-five, forty-one. Um, I did send you, um, your February report, and we do have some new variances. Um, the, uh, the correction was made, um, that happened in the month prior of the salaries for the, uh, school, uh, educational nurse. Uh, and the curriculum development stipend is still showing negative, but we still have a positive, uh, balance in the offset account. But we're, our tuition accounts are over budget by about thirteen thousand, three forty-two. And this is due to an unexpected increase in tuitions awarded to one of the, uh, chapter seven, sixty-six schools. Uh, the OSD increased them, um, because they had to move, um, and their rent went up. So, the tuition that we were paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars per student, we are now paying a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a student. So we thought we had some potential state savings, but then when that came through.
A hundred and sixteen thousand.
A hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year, per child, and we have three students there.
Are we gonna be able to bring that program in-house?
No.
How many do we have in there?
Three. We could possibly bring one back.
We, we, it's a good question, we have a similar program in-house, but those students were already enrolled in this program prior to the creation of that system. So, there is talk, you know, we talked with the families and stuff, and it's gotta be a full agreement to bring them back. So, there's attempts, and we brought some back over the years, but.
Is there transportation on top of that?
Yes.
Daily or weekly?
Daily to us Springfield, back and forth.
It's still a hundred and sixteen thousand for a day. Alright, my other question on the warrants that we signed tonight, and we went through, the financial statements that you mailed us, you mailed us today, are those figures reflected in those financial statements?
Did you repeat the, what did I send you today?
We, we did warrants, alright, the last few days, and then we got a copy of the financial statements. Did I get an email on it today? What are the financial statements?
I, I can't, I don't remember, I, this is the week from how we do it budgets and, and, and meetings, and I don't know when I emailed who and what, when and where.
I think we got financial statements today. And.
I thought I did them yesterday.
That was, that was yesterday.
I think it was yesterday.
But the question is, are the warrants reflected that we signed, right, and did you, we signed tonight?
Yes.
And mailed over the weekend, have those figures been reflected in those financial statements?
Here, yes, but when we do it at the elementary schools, they appear the month following.
Okay, so.
So your January warrants are showing in the, the column that says range to date, that, that would be what your, that was.
So, that money, if it's not in, has an encumbrance? Uh, we can pretty much look at it, uh, as, uh, ours, and we're not committed on any of it specifically, present for tuitions or anything like that.
When you say ours, I mean, some of it belongs to department heads who plan on spending money upon their departments.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's, what I'm saying is, we're not, it hasn't already been spent.
That's not true, we don't have a purchase order system, so a lot of this money can be spent.
So the encumbrances aren't up to date, that's the question.
The encumbrances are only for payroll, we do not have an encumbrance system for non-payroll items.
You do for school bus transportation, don't you?
Obviously, I don't, I might put one in for that, and I put one in for the tuitions, but that's about it, they don't do them at the high school, they don't do them in the elementary schools.
I'm just trying to get a handle on.
We do them in the main office for big things, bus contract or tuitions, because it helps us track.
Okay. So right now, we're not looking at a substantial, uh, balance at the end of the year?
No, I'm looking at, right now, um, we have budget savings of about six, that I can, that I can account for, six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
It's almost like nothing. Are we, uh, content to stand pat, or should we freeze, or what should we do? Because we do not want any.
I misunderstand what you're saying, but we have a lot of budget item lines that we won't know if we will spend out, that the remainders end up, ends up creating our E and D.
Right.
For example, you know, like I have, I have a bunch of budgets in my head, that I can know that there's remaining money right now as of February. You know what I mean, that, you know, I know like the English department has, you know, seven hundred dollars left in their account, and there's, you know, there's all these different accounts with that kind of money in it. But those monies, if they're not spent at the end of the year, fall back into the main account. But they're still buying books and materials for second semester courses, so that's why I gave that one as an example, but there's other accounts that we can't project out that we're gonna have savings yet this early in the year, we don't know the snow plowing savings yet, because the snow season is over yet, we don't know the energy savings yet. So to say there's only six thousand left over, there may be a hundred thousand dollars left over, or in past practice, we've had several hundred thousand dollars left over.
And our snowplow people are the slowest dealers.
Right, and so, and so the, the idea of worrying about freezing and that kind of thing right now, I, my guess would be, it's a little premature, I mean, I run Patty's idea, but, I don't know what year.
Well, you've got a chunk of money in there for textbooks, I'm not sure what department it was, what, uh, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for textbooks.
Correct, we have a thirty-five thousand dollar account for textbooks total, yes, for all, all departments.
But it hasn't, it's still there as a statement I looked at.
Correct. Well, not in total, no.
Most, a substantial amount of.
Because you can get around twelve thousand dollars left there.
Patty? Patty, when you got a minute?
I was just trying to find the textbook line real fast, there's, uh, oh well, and you might have made a purchase and it's not recorded yet, uh, there's, you've got about twenty-five grand in there.
So, prior to going to new question.
That could be something you are, in your head, you ordered it, we just don't have the bill yet.
Right, no, I tried, yeah, I spent one.
Can I say something first?
Yeah.
Something brought up, a good thing about not, the purchase order system again. If we had the purchase order system, like you're saying, nothing's been encumbered yet, because whatever textbooks, would a purchase order system that we've been talking about for a few years help us into the budget, right?
Not only will it help us with budget and knowing where we are, it is going to free up a lot of my time for all the manual calculations that I am doing every month.
And why, and why is it the principal's responsibility to run a purchase order system at a particular school?
I don't know why the module was never used when they bought the software. It's, if, well, we've owned the software forever, I don't know why it was never implemented. But now, we were going, um, Scott Paul and I were going back between, because we're gonna go from a handful of users to many users, did we wanna go to the cloud? Or do we wanna buy a bigger server? So, the cloud was gonna be a recurring thirty thousand dollar a year, and I finally convinced them, it's, it's not worth it, it's just, it's just not worth it. Although they say the ease of using it, I, I don't see the difference, it's a difference of adding a line in a different manner. So, now they bought the new server, and it, we're going to switch over the Friday of vacation, we'll be, we will not have access. And then I have someone who has been training to train, so then we've got to get the staff to train. So at this point in the year, do we want to get them to, I wanna get them trained, so when they, they can at least start putting their purchase orders in for summer of FY nineteen? Would be the goal.
Alright, right, because I work in a company that purchases a lot of things, and it's as simple as me going to computer, picking Benjamin Moore paints.
Correct.
Gives me a purchase order, I fax it over, everything, you can track something by a purchase order number, and how you pay it is through a purchase order, if you don't have a purchase order, you don't get your money.
And that's what's gonna happen, and that, that's what's gonna happen now, if I get a bill and there is no purchase order, that bill is going back to the person who should have cut the purchase order and say, you pay the bill, you, you ordered something without a purchase order.
And this is next fiscal year, we'll do this?
Uh, it, it, I'm gonna allow them to do it once they get trained, if they want to do it in eighteen, the end of eighteen, they can, but they absolutely have to do it as of July first.
Just for clarification for third parties watching this, we have a purchase order system that does track, it's just all done manually, it's not done computerized. So I have to go to the person keeping the book, who has to open up the book and tell me where the account stands before it gets to Patty. So, it does exist, I just wanted to make sure, there is a tracking system, we're not, we're not two hundred years ago, okay? There we, there are people with purchase orders, and we're getting bills, and it's, you know, and we're connecting it too, but we do have to get up to date, we do have to eventually get to a software, I agree to that. But I don't wanna make it think that's like the wild west out there.
Go into the draw where the purchases orders are, and then manually put them in the calculator to get a total, and.
I understand we have to go there, it's just the way it sounded like, it was like, oh, we need, we need to get these things called a purchase order, like, you know, you have a full account for doing that.
But, but the theory is, there are schools that wait until the bill comes in, and then they do the purchase order.
Alright, yeah, Frontier was not to it that way, you need a purchase order before you make.
My question was very similar to yours, and it really, so it sounds like there's, uh, some kind of a process that's underway, uh, to make that happen, and I guess I would either make a motion or vote that we not freeze right now, but with some more information at the next meeting, because, because that, that was.
We don't have to make a motion to not.
The question, I know, I know, there's not a, not a motion to not freeze, I was, wasn't sure how to say that, thank you.
Not take any action at this time.
There was a, yeah, there was a question on whether we wanted to freeze.
Yeah, I was just inquiring if, if Patty was comfortable where we are, if you only got sixty-five hundred dollars, it's, you know. Phil had something first.
Uh, I just wanted to ask about a few other overages in the financial statement, so.
I'm still on purchase order.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, what's your purchase order?
Well, you just mentioned that we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and I sat in that chair for five years, and I don't really remember talking about this, so when were we talking about this?
I remember.
When? I, I don't remember this being as big of a problem as, as it sounds like, so obviously what you're doing is working, it's just, you need to move forward.
No, we've been, we've been talking about updating to go to, to getting the ability.
But I don't remember it at school committee. What happens, Cindy, is, if we have a purchase order system, I'd be able to tell you earlier than June. No, I've got a thousand dollars left over, and now we have to hurry up and spend a hundred thousand. I'm totally on the same page as you, I just don't remember talking about it at school committee. Okay. And so, that was my question, when did we talk about it, but you said we did, I'll believe you.
I hear, hold on, hold on, Phil first, is it about, is it about purchase orders?
Yeah.
Okay. If, if when the purchase orders are all implemented and what have you, and we get the warrants, are we gonna be able to click on the item we want and see the backup as to what?
No, not until you give me a hundred thousand dollars to buy a server that would have that much memory in it, that I can scan all this.
I thought you said, just said you bought us, you just bought a server.
We bought a thirty thousand dollar server, that would be cool. We would need a much larger server to scan invoices and all purchase orders into a system.
But that would, down the road.
Sure, that's a vision, I mean, people have been using computerized PO since the eighteenth century, and we're just getting there now.
That's a hundred thousand dollar road, when are we gonna take a trip down that one?
We're not going down it yet.
You've got to have a check by the end of the week.
No, we've been talking about scanning a long time.
But what I'm trying, trying to say is, is with the storage and everything else, you really think it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars to buy the storage you need?
The, yeah, I do, and then, and then I, and then we, it adds paper, it adds work to the people who are, are doing the work, so, uh, that adds hours.
But the, but the, but the scanning purposes won't have the problem like we have at the Blue School right now, with boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes of receipts and invoices and everything that we have to keep for so many years, if we scanned these things, we wouldn't have that problem over there. And I know we've been talking about scanning for a while, I mean, I'm not, I know it's a hundred thousand dollars for, for thing, but it's something that we're gonna have to address.
Just saying, we're just getting into the twenty-first century now for purchase orders, let's not, no, let's, let's get 'em used to that before we have to scan it.
You said something about the purchase orders?
Okay.
I'm just wondering if the four elementary schools do it by hand or they're.
By hand. It's a group effort.
Phil has a question about overages.
A couple of the other overages, a couple of seven thousand dollar-ish overages, one was like a summer maintenance, one was a stipend for.
So, summer maintenance one, it's just a matter of where she puts it, um, it's really budgeted in, um, it's budgeted in the custodial line, but for some reason she breaks it out, and I'm not gonna tell her not to, or I can tell her not to, but she's gonna do it anyway. So, um, next year I'll just budget that money there, instead of putting it in the custodial line, I can pull it out and put it in there.
So that's not gonna be an over to the end, that's gonna be?
No.
Okay.
If you look at, you gotta net everything, I always tell you, look at the, the total function code, and if we're, the total function code, we're still positive, don't worry.
And the, uh, stipend for curriculum, something or other?
That, and that is the one I'm telling you, there, there's, there is an offset, because Sarah has one account, and she, but if she pays stipends, it has to be broken out. But she doesn't know at the beginning of the year how much of it's gonna be stipends and how much is material, so she's got two, a line, so she's negative seventy-eight ninety-four, but she's plus twenty-one eight ninety, so net it together, we're still positive, she's still within her budget, and that's what that, that first note is.
Well, she's got a lot of money in professional development, so.
And was it, wrestling goes fifty percent over budget?
Wrestling, I, I don't know, I think, I don't know why that is, I have, I meant to shoot Barney Sanderson a note, I don't know, did they have, they have to hire a new, an extra coach?
Well, we had, we hired the assistant, the assistant we hired was the longtime head coach for the last twenty-something years, Mr. Gordon, he came back to help out with the team, so it was budgeted for, it was budgeted for a year, first year kind of thing, and he comes in on step three, you know, um, with all his, you know, all his experience, so that makes him a very expensive head coach, a very expensive assistant coach.
Well, they're having a good year, so.
Yes, they are, they, they made it to the finals, and they'll be going, they're leaving Friday, and, um, they're going to Wakefield, and they'll be, uh, in their tournament on Saturday.
And then, um, school committee stuff, like, are we over on school committee conference most?
Yeah, a lot of people went to the conference this year, but we're, again, you're still, you, eight thousand, six eighty-one, so I'm not concerned. You still have sixty, sixty-seven hundred dollars in supplies and materials, and twenty-five hundred, so you just don't use those supplies and materials.
Your brown bag in the next year. They, uh, actually what they did is they, they put those expenses in a separate line, with no money budget to begin with. So that's why it's into the negative.
See, I, I can budget things, and I budget, I, I budget things where they used to charge them, now they're getting smarter, now I budget there, and now they're using the correct account, so you know, it's a constant challenge.
Keith, you have one more?
I just had two, yeah, there was, uh, instructional software, like eight thousand over, and then a retirement.
The instructional software, we had talked about that, that was on a meeting note, um, once we went to the one-to-one devices in seventh grade, the teachers wanted the GoGuardian, so they could monitor. So we used some, um, payroll savings, so we were, we're gonna be over in, um, the science salaries, and we used the, uh, five thousand, six thousand to buy the GoGuardian software.
And this, yeah, this is where it gets, it gets a little bit.
But I keep, I keep talking of this!
We, we, people watching it, right, that's pretty good, and then we took five thousand out of textbooks to get back into the technology fund to buy, to fix some projectors over in the building, because the GoGuardian software was being used like textbooks, you know, because it allows you to read, it allows you to focus in. Can't remember that presentation, it allows the teacher to, to lock the screens of all the computers in the room, to read just the article that's in front of them, that kind of stuff, so.
Do you have anything else, sir?
There was just a, a retirement overage.
A retirement overage?
Twenty-five thousand.
Oh, right, I explained that before too, um, what happened with that was that we used to charge, uh, some of the grants a piece of that, but we're not allowed to do that anymore, the federal regs changed, so we, we have to pay for all of it. And that is, uh, the, you, twenty-five thousand this year, the budget coming up, it's gone up another forty thousand dollars.
Does anybody have anything else for Patty on the financial statement and warrants? So Patty, we're gonna let you keep on going.
Thank you.
Talk to us about this nice budget, and you and your subcommittee came up with it.
I'm choking, so.
So, um.
I'll let Lynn start.
Yeah, I'll just start, well, uh, we're talking about, on page one of fifty-four, is the superintendent's message, and at the bottom paragraph, you'll see the Hampshire County Trust, Insurance Trust. Um, there's a, there's a very simple explanation for the stakeholders, the taxpayers, of, of the towns to understand that, um, the reserves dwindled, and we, and I put in a little bit of data to, to show, uh, where and how the reserves have dwindled, and so for FY nineteen, the Hampshire County Insurance Trust has proposed an increased insurance, uh, co-pays in order to keep the premiums down. And this requires us, Frontier Regional District, uh, and the towns, the Union Thirty-Eight Schools, to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter Twenty-One B, Sections Twenty-One and Twenty-Three, which we did in June, and enter into negotiations with the teachers' union to negotiate a settlement regarding the planned savings. So, Patty's right now in the process of sending letters around and putting together a committee, uh, there needs to be a retired person on the committee, and, uh, the teachers' union, and, um.
I don't know who else, I have the public stakeholder retiring.
So they will, um, decide how that extra money, twenty-five percent of the savings, will be disseminated to all the participants in the health insurance program. This, uh, increased, uh, co-pays are approximately four point seven for HMO and three point three for PPO. And my understanding is that had we not gone this way, had, um, this not become a solution, the premiums would have gone up quite significantly.
Top of digits, ten, ten to eleven percent.
So it moves us, and so that's, that's a very basic explanation. If you move over to, um, I was gonna say channel, you move over to page four of fifty-four, you're going to see some, um, pie charts that really pulls out the different numbers from the different accounts, and the different areas where our budget is. And, uh, when we look at our FY nineteen proposed budget, you'll see, uh, instruction is about forty-nine percent of all the money we spend. Forty-nine percent of everything in this is, is pure instruction. You'll see other student services, and that's transportation, health services, uh, things like that, that's eight percent. The administration, that is, the building administration, as well as the central office portion of what you pay for, uh, the, the business offices, the finance, the financial people, the bookkeepers, and the superintendent's office. Tuition to other districts is seven percent of what our budget is. Employee benefits, twenty percent is, uh, uh, part of our budget, the whole budget, and then building and facilities takes up nine percent. If you look down below, you see our FY nineteen revenue sources. You'll see that the town assessments, um, are seventy percent, so the town, um, the four towns come together, and they provide us with seventy percent of the funding. Our chapter seventy-eight, that goes into the towns and comes into us, is twenty-four percent, that's our state funding. Our sped grant is point nine percent, our title one is point four percent, our circuit breaker is one point eight percent, our sped revolving is one percent. And school choice provides us with two percent of our overall revenue. If you turn the page, you're going to see it broken down even further by areas of spending, which correlate with the, with the actual item numbers. So the one thousands are, are administration, seven percent of the budget is put aside for administration. Forty-two percent of that, seventy percent, is building-based leadership and clerical services, so that's everyone that works in the main office, and, uh, as well as the principal and the assistant principal. Three percent is the school committee and legal services, so what we pay our legal, um, our attorney for their advice, and their coverage, plus whatever money we spend for the school committee when they go on when they go to the MASC, MASs, and, uh, other spending. The superintendent, business and finance offices, is forty-two percent of seven percent of the budget. And then our information, uh, management and technology office, which is district-wide, your piece, Frontier Regional's piece is thirteen percent of seven percent. When we look down further at buildings and facilities, that compromises, or comprises nine percent of the budget. So when you look at the maintenance of the buildings, grounds, and equipment, that's twenty-two percent of nine percent. Custodian services is thirty-seven percent, network and communications is five percent, and then our heating and utilities is thirty-six percent of that portion of the budget. So when we get to instruction, that's forty-nine percent of what we spend of the entire budget. And you can look at, um, on the left side, teachers and department heads, that comes to seventy percent of what the instruction goes for, as it should. Then you can see other areas, medical and therapeutic services, four percent, those are our OTPT, speech, um, counseling, well, not counseling, but, um.
The LPN.
Yes, the LPN, I'm sorry, the LPNs that take care of our life skills students, uh, that's four percent. Guidance and psychological services, psychologist services, that's eight percent of what goes into our instructional area of the budget. And our instructional assistants are only ten percent of what goes into the budget, the instruction area of the budget. Supplies, materials, and technology, five percent. And then curriculum director and sped director, that's three percent of the overall instruction area of the budget. When we go further down, we're looking at other student services, and that's eight percent of the budget. Health services at fourteen percent, those are our nurses and our nurse supplies and that kind of healthcare. Transportation is fifty-one percent, food services is two percent, athletics and student activities is thirty-three percent of that portion of the budget of eight percent. Then we have some additional costs, and Patty was alluding to this earlier. Uh, tuition to other districts is twenty-six percent of that portion of the budget. And then employee retirement and insurance benefits at seventy-four percent of that piece of the budget. And that has, is quite significant, so, and that's the budget broken down into areas, um, that correspond with the numbers, the, uh, line items in the numbers. And it includes all our areas of revenue, what is on the general, uh, budget, which, uh, we asked the town for, but it also includes money that we spend using school choice, sped revolving, sped grant, and our other sources of funding. So, what we're presenting is um, I'm gonna let Patty do the, this, uh, narrative, uh, she can speak to it more closely, so, but it's a three point nine overall.
Three point oh nine.
Oh, I do that every time, three point oh nine, uh, increase over last year's requested budget, or used budget, actual budget.
So, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let you read the, um, narrative, and I'm gonna walk you through, starting on page eleven of fifty-four, which is our student and staff data sheet. And, um, on the left-hand side, um, is the number of students we had at October first, um, and we freeze it there, because that's what our funding is based on. So on October first, we had six hundred and twenty-three students, a hundred and twenty-one of them were special ed, and they, that one twenty-one is within that six twenty-three. Um, projected enrollment, I am keeping current with, um, with the, with the changes in the, um, the monthly, uh, enrollments. Uh, grade seven, that's me taking every sixth grader in the, it's four elementaries, um, and Darius can explain to you why it's probably not gonna be one hundred and twenty-five, if you wanna take that piece from me, what happens?
I think you've heard me say this a couple of times, that's the total number of students that are in their current sixth grade, we are gonna lose some going back to their, to their home. We are gonna lose, some going back to their, to their home school, their choice students. This is when some families will choose private school and how dreadfully, but they may also charge, they may also choose a charter school. So, yes, we lose about twenty students per year.
And how many do we lose, uh, uh, on the average to, don't, do we lose some children at this stage too, to the vocational?
Not, not in that line. So the other line you look at is the ninth, the next grade, ninth year, ninth grade class, you probably could estimate there would lose between ten and fifteen students to the, to tech. Again, it ranges, but somewhere in the low teens is the, is the number they usually take.
So we're looking at, it says six hundred and sixty-three, but it's not gonna, it, we're not gonna see that. Uh, on the right is our staff, um, and these are changes that, um, we made in staffing during the year. So when you see that we're down one English teacher, we had a retirement, and what, uh, Darius did was he took instead of hiring an English teacher, he hired someone else and parsed them out between, I believe, social studies, industrial arts and academic support services. Um, so right now, we're down one point one in totality, and that is because we are down one IA who was with a student who is no longer with us. Uh, and then our occupational therapy dropped a point, uh, one. We were last year at point three services, and this year we only needed point two. So that is the changes. And then down the bottom, we, um, those are the columns in our collective bargaining agreement. And I've listed for you, um, how many teachers are in bachelors, how many are masters, how many are masters plus thirty, and how many are masters forty-five or CAGs. The next page, twelve of fifty-four, this is gonna take us from where we are right now, FY eighteen, ten million, seven sixteen, nine forty-five. We had to do the collective bargaining steps, and that added fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. The two and a half percent increase was a hundred and six thousand, six fifty. We have new longevity payments of ten thousand, five hundred. There's an allowance for non-union salary raises of sixteen thousand, one thirty-five. We had to bring on to the appropriated budget, uh, sixty-five thousand, six twenty-two from school choice, and we'll talk about that when we get to school choice. Our coaching stipends have had a small increase of about three thousand, one fifty-six. Mentor stipends, three thousand, five fifty. This isn't a new item, it's just one that never gets budgeted. So we're, we're gonna budget it, and I'm, we're gonna know where to put it. Um, we don't have any announced retirements for buybacks, so we are decreasing thirty-seven thousand, nine seventy-eight. And we also had a savings of fifty-six thousand, five thirty-six back in the budget between the, uh, what we had budgeted for FY eighteen hires and what Darius had hired them at. Now, we also have to add, looking at it, we're, uh, we're continually under budget in our gas expense, so we're gonna raise that by four hundred. Unemployment tax is gonna go up eight hundred and six, and that's based on our salaries increasing. Health insurance waivers, we have one new person who is waiving the insurance, and they get, if they do not take our, a teacher does not take our insurance, they get a thousand dollars. Our custodial supplies are always running over, so we'd like to add two thousand there. Regional transportation is gonna go up five thousand, one one four, and that is a one point eight-three percent increase, which is in the contract based on a consumer price index. Um, and just so you're all aware, FY nineteen is the fifth year of our five-year contract with, um, Gripen. So we will be looking, we'll be going out to bed, um, next, next year for a new contract. Our Medicare tax will go up eleven thousand, ninety-five because of our, uh, wages. Central office expense is up fifteen thousand, three ninety-one. Um, and that is a combination of the percent, uh, Frontier's percent going up, but also that we added the food service director and the health insurance cost for the central office people. The town of Deerfield is not Deerfield, like Seinfeld. Deerfield is going to be, uh, charging us sewer fees. I don't know why they never did before, but they're starting to now, so we have to add eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty. The student technology devices, twenty-five thousand. This is, um, the, um, we need this money to continue the one-to-one device program for our students, and it's what Scott Paul, our technology director feels we need every year to replace outdated, you know, they, Chromebooks, they really, uh, they don't take new softwares more quickly than, than a laptop will. They, they age out, so, and this will replace one grade, at least one grade every year, and continue our program so that we are all seven through twelve on one-to-one devices. The Franklin County Retirement Assessment went up forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and if Mr., in a Mr. Kowacki's world, words, it's because people are living longer. Um, health insurance is up a hundred, nine thousand, three sixty-four. So we also had some small operational decreases. Our life insurance, we can, we can reduce by nine seventy. Our copier costs are going down thirteen seventy-three. Our monitor stipends down three thousand. Uh, total technology costs based on the allocations, um, by student are gonna go down three thousand, four eighty-one. Our other insurances, and when I say other, I mean our non-employee insurances, um, we're gonna have a savings of about eleven thousand, and that is because our five-year workers' comp, we finally got rid of our high years, so we've got five low years right now, so our workers' comp is, is really saving us some money. Um, we were carrying an extra eleven thousand, five fifty-five in, uh, the professional services line, so we can reduce that. And our sped director feels that we can reduce our sped summer services by fifteen thousand, six eighty-eight, and our sped tuition's by twenty-three thousand, five ninety, for a total decrease of seventy thousand, six ninety-four. But the net change is an increase of three thirty-one, five oh nine, or three point oh nine percent, and it brings our total to eleven million, forty-eight thousand, four fifty-four. So on the, on the next pages, pages thirteen. Through, I think page, yeah, to twenty-four is the actual breakdown of each account. You'll see what we spent actually in, in FY seventeen, FY eighteen budget, and what we're proposing for F, the FY nineteen. And this is exactly what your monthly report is. So this is what Desi requires, and if you look, it, it pretty much lines up very easily with our, our software, um, with the accounts we have in our software. I just don't put the account numbers on there, 'cause then I'd have to make everything so squishy, you wouldn't be able to see it. So you can look at that at your leisure. Um, starting on page twenty-five, we're showing you all our other sources of funding and how they're spent. So there's nothing on twenty-five. On page twenty-six, uh, the sped grant pays forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars for a, um, the sped secretary. Uh, on the next page, you'll see the school choice is paying for some teachers, circuit breaker's paying for some teachers, sped revolving is paying for teachers, Title I is paying for teachers. So when we look at, um, just the one budget, it looks like our teaching is two point nine million, when really it's three point one. So this gives you a broader view of what we're really spending on all our, all of our teachers. Um, our specialist, circuit breaker, is adding to that. On the next page, you'll also see we use a lot of our, our money for, um, uh, an educational support nurse, and also a lot of our instructional assistants in these special revenue funds. And so if you go through to page. Thank you, or thirty-six, you'll see that the, the, the percentages of what we're using. So ninety-three point ninety-nine percent of our budget is coming from, um, the general fund. School choice is providing one point nine five percent, circuit breaker one point eight two, sped revolving one point oh two, the sped grant point eight six, and the Title I point three six. So when we add up all our funds, we would be spending eleven million, seven fifty-four, four oh four in FY nineteen. The next page is our, uh, analysis.
Yeah. Is the increase in Franklin County Retirement Assessment, is that reflected in that page thirty-six insurance stuff?
Yeah, it's the five twenty, right?
Uh, it would, no, it's gonna be, you wanna know where the line item is, Phil?
Well, I, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to get my, my, uh, head around that still, the forty-five thousand dollar increase on the theory that people are living longer, which of course is contrary to fact, we are the only country, major country that has a decrease in lifespan. The past two years, American lifespan has decreased because so many people are dying of unemployment. It's because we don't have health insurance for everybody.
Well, I'll forward you his analysis. But it's gonna be rolled into on page twenty-four, insurance for active employees, the fifty-two hundred, I believe it's rolled into there. Actually, I'm wrong. Go to page twenty-three of fifty-four, employer retirement contributions, function code fifty-one hundred. Our budget was for FY fourteen, eighteen was three fifty-eight, oh thirty-two. Our assessment is four oh three, one sixty, and the change is forty-five thousand, one twenty-eight. And that's if we pay it in full in July, which we normally do, we get a, uh, we'll save about seven thousand dollars by paying it early, instead of in two pieces.
So that seven thousand comes out of the forty-five? We can subtract it from the forty-five?
No, I don't include it. It would, I would add seven thousand if we weren't gonna pay it at the, all at once.
Oh, okay, so this is the number.
This is the reduced.
Okay, thanks.
That's the stuff that kills our budget. That's the stuff that kills our budget, those twelve percent increases.
Just be happy that most of our, our employees are MTRS. So on page thirty-seven, this is, um, this is our projection based on the governor's budget of our choice and charter. And for this year, we projected that the choice tuition and revenue would be one million, one sixty-five, forty. Prelimarily, it's an increase to one point two, um, or fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four. Our start, our state charter aid went up by fifty thousand, one ninety-one. And, but on the flip side of that, our outgoing school choice increased seventy-nine thousand, eight eighty-nine, and our charter went up two oh six, eight seventeen. So we thought we were gonna have a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, um, net, but we're gonna have seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty. And then the projection for the nineteen budget, they're saying we're gonna be upside down again, and they had predicted this in seventeen, that we were gonna have, we assessed sixty-five thousand, but we ended up getting in about three hundred thousand dollars, and we saved that money. We did not spend that money, we're spending some of it this year. So, but once again, um, our beginning balance, if you look below, is four sixty-six, eight forty-three. They had projected that we were gonna owe sixty-five thousand. We're gonna use in eighteen, a hundred and forty-two thousand, giving us a balance of three twenty-four. I'm gonna add that seventeen thousand, so what we have available for FY nineteen is three forty-one, eight ninety. And we'll have budgeted salaries and the thirty-five thousand dollar shortfall of two sixty-four, eight ninety-seven, which will leave us a little bit of a cushion of about fifty-nine thousand, eight thirteen. So, Mr. Dickory, I know you've been concerned about, you know, deficits, um, for the lunch program. This could be one place that we go and have a little cushion left here.
It could be enough.
Uh, yeah, I, I, yes, I do. But I, I, you know, I, I don't know that this is gonna be true. It didn't turn out to be true in seventeen, and I don't, and I don't know that it will be true in nineteen, but we have to budget to the number. Uh, the next page is the circuit breaker, and this is getting significantly lower because we are losing a lot of our students, they're aging out, our, um, that we're paying high sped costs for. So, but the problem is, the new programs that we've developed to keep our kids in-house are paid from these salaries. So next year, this, this swing of expenditures is gonna have to come onto our budget, because we want to maintain the, these programs in-house and not send our kids out into special ed programs. But we're gonna need to find a new source of revenue, because this is, is drying up. Not, not only is it twofold, because not only are we, are, are we earning less because we don't have our, as high costs, but also the state has been decreasing the amount that they've been reimbursing. So they used to give us close to seventy-two, I think they're around sixty-five now, so it's like a double whammy, because it's in the, it's the legislative process that sets the rate of, of reimbursement.
And it doesn't start until it's thirty thousand or so per kid, right?
Uh, more than that, I think it's like around thirty-eight something now. Could be even up to forty-two now.
There's the possibility that these are students we're talking about who could be going to the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
No, these, this, these, these are for the teachers who are keeping more kids going out to the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, but if we, if we lose these kids, that's where they're gonna be going.
Correct. So either way, our budget's gonna go up, 'cause we're either, if we can't, if we can't sustain them here, if we, we can't find the money, then we're gonna have to find the money for tuition, so. Next year, it's gonna be tough. Um, the next page is the excess and deficiency. It was certified by DOR on the eighth of January at three hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven. You heard Mr. Scanlon talk about correcting, um, an insurance withholding, which we're estimating to be about sixty thousand. And the finance subcommittee voted to use, again, as they did last year, half of the remainder to apply to the assessments. So our available excess and deficiency funds are one forty-six, two eighty-three. So on the next page, this is our, our analysis of our school choice receiving. So our final seventeen numbers were, we had a hundred and sixty-three kids, and they stayed, they didn't all stay all year, so the FTE was one forty-nine point sixty-six. We received four hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars in sped increment, and tuition of seven thirty-eight, three hundred, for a total of one million, two thirty-one, five fifty-four. And if you look in the column that says FY seventeen going down, that's where they were coming from. The bulk of them, as you can see, uh, is from Greenfield, sixty-four point oh one, and then Montague, uh, fourteen, was the next highest one. What we reported in October is a hundred and sixty kids, um, and a sped increment of four twenty, oh eighty-five, tuition of seven ninety-five for one million, two fifteen. And again, if you look, um, in that FY eighteen column, the majority comes from Greenfield with sixty-six kids, and Montague again with thirty kids.
Can I ask you a dumb question?
Sure.
Why are Montague and Turner's Falls called out differently? They only have one school.
Um, I, Montague and who?
Turner's Falls.
Well, that's probably why it says zero, it, it depends on how the state reports it. Sometimes they, it, it's one, they were reported as Gil, Montague, and then other times they report Gil and then Montague. So this, this twelve sixty-seven of Turner's Falls should probably come up to Montague.
Or is this the town that they come from, or the school that they come from?
The, it's the sending district, it's supposed to be the sending district.
There's only Gil, Montague, Turner's Falls High School, there's only one.
So we should probably add them all together, and.
I don't know, I just, I didn't know if they were, if that was the towns they were coming from, because there's the town of Montague, the village of Turner's Falls, the village of Lake Pleasant, they got all the little villages within the.
Right, so you were wondering if it was.
So I just didn't know.
They're sending town.
What was who?
They're sending part of the town.
Yeah, Village Falls too.
Right.
Yeah, but they're also saying that in seventeen, they had twelve point six seven kids, and Montague had fourteen, but now it's up to thirty with nothing down in Turner's Falls.
Probably a lot of those kids.
They loved them altogether.
Okay, they loved them. So in seventeen.
Yeah, but I bet you, part of that number was coming from Turner's.
It's probably me, because in seventeen, I probably looked at the town they were from, and then in eighteen, I took their school sending district.
Well, the elementarys would show the numbers, and that's the elementary school they came from. Unless they go from elementary to seventh grade, then all this, it all gets condensed into that year.
There's a lot of money.
Depending on what number you.
I know in Whiteman, we have a lot of kids from Montague and Whiteman as well.
Well, you break them down, the Mollaw kids, you break them down to Ashfield, Buckland, Sheldon, Sheldon Falls, so.
So what would your pleasure be, by town or by school district?
I'm not trying to cause trouble, I just, I'm just asking, I don't wanna make more work.
By town, the way you're doing it now.
Okay. All right, and then, um, the next page is their grades that they're coming from.
Well, that's weird, down to twenty-one percent.
How can we have thirty students and then twenty-one with no variables?
Um, 'cause something seems to be wrong in that box. Um, something seems to be wrong in that box. And what I normally do, though, Cindy, is I look at, I compare the left-hand grade 7, that, this is what happens, to the right-hand grade 8, to see if we lost anything.
Oh, I get it.
So 30 to 30 is 0, 28 to 23 is minus 5. So I'm kinda diagonal.
So it's a diagonal.
It's a diagonal map.
No, no.
On the next page, it's our sending report. So in June, there was four, a total of 43 kids who were out for 40.62. We paid 29,602 in sped increment, and 204,725 in tuition, for 234327. Prelimarily, in June, we're down 142, with a sped increment estimate of 103464, and tuition of 208250, for a total of 311714. And again, down below is where they're going. And the majority of them seem to be going to Hatfield and North Hampton. And again, the great, the next page, 43, is the grades that they're in. Page 44 is our charter. And in the end of June, there were 46 students that stayed out, 42.98 FTEs. We paid 750,048 in charter tuition, 38,324 in facility fees, for a total of 788372. And if you look at the preliminary 18, it's jumping six kids to up to 52 students, and the charter tuition is 928447, and the facility fee is 46178, for a total of 974625.
What's the facility fees?
They get charged, you pay a tuition and the facility fee.
Like a chemistry class or something?
I, no, I think it's for their building, their...
Why, they're all brand-new buildings?
So the fee doesn't take care of any of the maintenance or facilities or things?
Pays the outstanding arrest warrants for their principals.
Right. Administrative costs.
So, as you can see, the, the two schools that we, they primarily are attending are Four Rivers and the PVPA. And down below is the grades.
That's scary, that, that number's grade 7, 15 and 11. That's where it's the cheapest, when they get up to be 12, that's where it's gonna cost us a lot, a lot more money, when they get up to 10, 11, and 12th grade. 'Cause all those increments go up. The state pays less to us until it gets up to, I'm not sure when it stops, and we pay for everything.
After year five.
Is it after year five?
No, I think it's year three.
Or year, yeah.
I think it's three-year phase now.
A lot of money.
So the next page is what I call Bob Decker's favorite page. And what I do is I break out the charter and choice out by town, both the number of students and the number, and the actual tuition that's paid. And if you look on the, on the right-hand chart at the bottom, you'll see that Conway, their choice and charter is 301,850, yet per our agreement, they only pay 204,313. So they make out 97,836. Deerfield sends out 511,78 dollars worth of kids, yet they're paying out 624003. So they're over-assessed 112,000. Sunderland, the same thing, they send out about 240, but they pay 305. And Wheatley sends out 233 and pays only 153, so they, they get a discount of about $80,000. But this is something that occurred after the regional agreement was developed, and we've never gone back and adjusted for it.
So Conway pays $97,000 less than technically they should?
Correct.
If, if we did, if we, if these were assessed by, by town, if each town paid for their own children going to choi...
We're just in agreement.
Yes.
For five years ago.
I know.
It wasn't, these weren't like this five years ago.
It's been that way.
Our little town paid for a lot of extra years there, a lot.
Conway gets hammered too. We all get hammered, what does it say?
What it basically is, is the kids that are going charter, aren't, there's no formula for them. We pay them, the district pays for any kid who wants to go to charter. And, and it's the regular, regular kids that go to school, it's that formula that picks up all the costs. So, you know, the October 1 split, and that's why it's disproportionate, disproportionate number of kids go from Conway and Wheatley to charter schools compared to Sunderland and Deerfield.
So now we're gonna get into the assessment part of the budget, starting on page 47, and this is the calculation of the five-year enrollment. So we add in year 2017, and we drop out 2012. So we're, Conway's down four children, Deerfield's, I mean, Conway's up four children, Deerfield's down 12, Sunderland's down eight, Wheatley's down 15. So it was a total change of 31 less children than we had from 2012 to 2017. So how that affects the assessment, Conway's gonna go from 15.86 up to 16.22. There's gonna be a small adjustment to Deerfield, 4857 to 4864. A small decrease for Sunderland of 2373 to 2370. And Wheatley will go from 1184 down to 1144. This next page is showing the revenue analysis. So the assessments to the town is going to increase 349,615. The chapter 70, or it increased 11,100, which was $20 per student. The regional transportation, the excess and deficiency is going to decrease 10,766. The regional transportation, we hope, will increase 30,691. And this year, there is no money coming out of the revolving transportation fund, because we did, we did not get as much as we thought in 17 as we would, we actually got less. Below is what the state right now is setting at the, as the minimum contributions for each town, and each town, you can see, besides Wheatley, hasn't, their minimum contribution has increased. And page 49 is the page from the state, which shows, we've had a difference of enrollment of four, we're up four kids. And that's how they calculate. So Conway is still as 97, Deerfield is up 6, Sunderland is the same, and Wheatley's down 2, to the foundation enrollment in those towns. Page 50 is the assessment analysis. So, right now, for the operating assessment, and the transportation, the combined assessment, Conway's assessment will go up 92,210, or 7.23 percent. Deerfield's increase is 196,503, or 5.39 percent. Sunderland's will increase 65,452, or 3.78 percent. And Wheatley's will actually go down 924, 4549, or .49 percent. Page 51 is the actual calculation. We take the budget less the transportation, we apply the chapter 70 aid, we apply the free cash, and that leaves 7,786749. We take the minimum contributions that we saw and deduct them, and that leaves 2,914,407 to be divided by the percentages that we saw on that first page, and that is how the assessments are computed, per ed reform. We still compare it to the regional agreement, and so if we went strictly by the regional agreement, there is a difference for Conway and Wheatley to their benefit, and Deerfield and Sunderland not to their benefit. So when we're looking at our numbers, it's always two to two. So if we tried to do anything with our regional agreement, it probably wouldn't go anywhere, 'cause two would vote yes and two would vote no. The next page is the transportation assessment. The estimated, if we, if you look just down below, the regional transportation per the cherry sheet is estimating 156818. I try to be a little bit more conservative of that. I look at our FY17 regional transportation costs per the end-of-year report, was 230,614, and I take 60% of that. So I'm estimating that it'll be more in the neighborhood of 138368. So the total transportation is 283, and less the 138368, that I'm estimating would be our reimbursement, means the towns will be assessed 144708. And you can see there is no credit there, because again, we got less than 17 than we had anticipated. Page 53 is just a balancing of the budget, 18 and 19, to the funding sources, and the changes to the assessments in the towns, and the chapter 70 funds, and excess and deficiency. So you can see, we'll have a balance of 11,48,454, and we'll have funding coming in of 11, And the last page is just our allocation page, that you see every year with the number of students, and how much each has changed for the regional assessment, for the union 38 costs, and the superintendent office costs.
You guys did a good job.
Thanks, Patty.
This one was, I don't know how to, the only way I can describe it is that the more we talked about the budget, the more we see, could see things that we don't like to see happen. Circuit breaker fund is drying up, because we're taking care more of students in-house, so you don't get the money from them. School choice is upside down. There are a bunch of lights in the end of the tunnel that the train is coming this way. So that's why, nobody was happy, trust me, the subcommittee had 3.09 percent. Because we know that at least three of the towns are not gonna be pleased with 3.09. But, I use the term, this is the year where you gotta draw a line in the sand and say, you've gotta take the 3.09 and run with it. Run it up the pole, see if anybody salutes us, because you can't keep, there's too many bad things looming that are gonna affect next year and the year after that in a bad way. So if we affect this year in a bad way, 3.09 is not, not terrible. And we, you know, Wheatley, Wheatley will be okay, and the other three towns are gonna have to. But they have an elementary, you know, they have, they all have elementary increases to do, so you put all the parts and pieces of it together. But we really, we really thought with, with what's in here, there's no wiggle room in here. It's people from here, it's very simple. There is, gave us a very simple explanation of, it's people after this. If you wanna make the 3.09 become a 2.09 or a 1.5, it's people. Because there's no other, there's no other place, there's no place to go. So we decided to go with 3.09. Bob?
I just wanna point out one thing. Patty mentioned that we never got billed for the sewer charges before. We've been billed for the sewer charges, but they were much more modest. I think we paid about 3,500 or $4,000 a year or so ago. And now the rate is $10 a thousand gallons every six months on the water that's used, that we use for showers, et cetera. They did adjust the bill, but it's gonna get worse, because there's gonna be millions of dollars have to be spent on the sewer plants. And it's, it's earth-shattering what it's costing me. Anybody that uses any water, it's all under rate there. Before, you had some condenser users who were picking a big part of the tab, not doing it anywhere.
Is that number gonna change if we put another meter that goes out to irrigation?
That is what we are estimating it'll be with the irrigation meter.
Okay, yeah. But this, but the thing is, years ago, you had Deerfield Plastics, used an awful lot of water, and you saw Rand used an awful lot of water, and Pickle Shop used a lot of water. And, you know, those customers were all gone. And so it's all being put on the residents, basically, on what?
Bob, I don't wanna contradict you, but I don't even have a water and sewer line.
I'm gonna tell you.
So I don't think we've ever paid a sewer bill.
Patty, I wanna tell you.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, $14,000, you are correct.
Because the IFIS, former administrative assistant of the town administration, commented in a public meeting that we didn't pay anything. And I know I had signed a warrant, but we before renewed it. And I went up and got a copy of it and brought it down to him, handed it to him, and said, this is what was paid. So no longer say we never paid anything.
We did pay something.
Well, he was trying to harp, he's no longer there, but he was harping that we never paid any sewer charges, and we had...
We paid $3,000 so far this year, and we have a new bill.
And the bill is, it was $18,500, cut it in half, right? Roughly.
For this year.
For this year, yeah.
For half the year.
Yeah, for the half year.
Now, I've already heard the argument that the regional agreement doesn't allow the town of Deerfield to just assess charges anymore, that that's, that the police department charged last year, that discharged sewer thing, that that's against the regional agreement, which limits whatever, but...
You know a good lawyer that wants to take a...
No, I mean, you know, it's, I sympathize, like, I think it's, but if, if that number gets crazy, like you're saying, it's gonna...
It's getting crazier. And they're gonna, they're talking about establishing institutional rate too, which we would qualify for. But the institutional rate would probably be higher than the residential rate.
So we'll have to buy...
We could put a...
$100,000 worth of new toilets that only flush a third of a gallon or something like that, or...
Or rinse small towels.
Why don't we just all hold it till we go home?
That isn't where your trouble is with this budget.
Showers.
It's not in the sewer, it's just...
Showers.
Does everybody else have any questions about the budget?
I have one. The town administrators have been chomping at the bit, is it okay if I release it to them?
We're gonna vote on it.
It's on the table, it's a public document.
We're gonna vote on attentive operating budget tonight, aren't we?
Uh, no, there's no vote scheduled, it's...
Thought we had to have it done.
Oh, they didn't write the unit up that way. It says there was no votes.
We usually take, yeah, we usually take it, the vote after the March public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we usually take your final one.
No, is that the tentative, or that's the final one?
The agreement calls you to do it twice, calls for you to do it twice.
I believe February was one...
I'm pretty sure it does.
I think it should. So we could vote it, you just say it was a clerical error.
That's all it was, was a clerical error, because we've done this for years.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to last February's agenda, 'cause I have it here.
And, you know, I'm not gonna claim for any that we adhered to the regional agreement last year either. I'm just telling you what's in it. I'm pretty sure that's what's in it.
I think you're right.
I know we vote twice. Because we can't do it in April.
No, no, we've never done it in April. We always, we always did the final, after public comment, we always did that.
Do the final. Last February, you did not vote in tentative.
Did we have an extra meeting last year? February 28th, maybe?
Wow.
Right at the end, is it?
Like a steel trap!
Remember we had an extra meeting? Do we give you guys some more time? Oh, please don't talk about two weeks ago.
No, you're right, we did.
I thought it was last year. Because we were up in the science room, so I might have to check that.
I don't think everyone waited until March to take the first vote on the budget. It's always been done in February. It used to be done before that, but I think a couple of years ago we moved it back in the regional agreement. It was earlier than that before. You guys are slow.
I believe there's an actual date that we have to take it by, isn't there? The final one?
I'm going to go to the January.
I can just tell you, it has to have a two thirds vote. Why don't we just get a motion? So we make a motion for a tentative budget.
Last year, all you did was vote a final in March.
Wow, I just remember having an extra meeting.
And you could be right and I don't have the agenda in my computer.
So why don't we just, why don't we make a motion and then that way we can release it to the towns.
So move. Second.
So are we okay with this?
Are we challenged? We just want to see what the typograph...
Well, it was.
Does everybody else have any questions about it for tentative budget voting?
Don't we have to do three numbers?
It used to be three, it's two because there's no date.
Okay.
Operating transportation. Two different ones?
So you would be voting tonight, you would need to make a motion to tentatively adopt an operating budget... Where the hell is that page just come? Of 10,765,378 and a transportation budget of 283,076 for a total budget of 11,48,454.
So move. I'll second that motion.
Do we need two votes or just one on that?
You can vote them once, you can vote twice.
We do it all once. All in favor?
So Phil made the...
Motion and Bill.
I have Bob Decker.
Well, after Patty wrote.
The budget was voted last year on March 22nd.
That's what I said. No one believes me.
For the last time, that's after the public comment. Did we only do it once?
We only did one, yep.
Let's go on to the next one.
We brought it up as unfinished business last year. March or February? March. Brought it up as unfinished business. Last thing, unfinished business motion by Bob Decker, second by Judy Pierce proposed FY18 budget of 10,438,983 and 277 for traction for total budget. It's approved eight to one, Bill Marapesi had stepped out.
Oh, it would still be unfinished business.
I remember that.
What's that?
I remember that. I remember that vote.
Do you have a February 28th meeting?
However...
I'm just waiting for the loan.
Find it.
I have the previous year in FY16, in February, you did vote a final FY16 transportation budget of 288,106 and an excess regional transportation, but that could have just been... No, that was just the figure that we needed because we didn't take it in September when we had the information and the auditors made us go back and do it.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, I found it. This is from Donna. Hi, everyone, there is no special meeting in the Frontier School Committee tonight. It was always a tentative meeting date and we decided that the meeting was not required. The next one will be held on the 14th. The public hearing begins at 6:00 and then we will begin immediately after. So we did have it scheduled just in case we needed it. We decided we didn't need it and we canceled it.
And it says right here, rescheduled for on the 14th.
Yep. Was there a snowstorm then?
We had a bunch of stuff in February that was rescheduled, so...
Yep, okay.
February was a tough month for snow last year.
Yep, that makes me feel better about what we did.
Think about technology, you can usually find it, it takes time.
Yep.
Do you have the regional agreement in the yellow box here?
No, I know.
So we have voted a tentative number.
Actually, we might have it because I think we got sent it on that wire.
We did get it because I have it in mind at home. We sent Linda sent us copies of the regional agreement a couple of months ago.
Linda sent us a copy.
Yes.
Find it.
What are you looking for?
The regional agreement.
See what it requires of us. It would be nice if we did it right.
Some of the Deerfield town office was asking for it as well.
Skip on it.
And I can send it again tonight. Are we looking for a date, line?
You said 11,17?
Yeah.
11,7.
11,7, sorry.
11,7. I got it here.
We're looking for a date. Can I find it before Bob's? We don't have the date yet.
There you go.
Too many pages.
What does it say? Just tell me what it said.
Just got to go through it now.
You need any younger set of eyes to help you there, Bob?
Yes, I do.
I'm waiting for the town administrator of Deerfield to come back and give us the date, what else to go to there. We already have Waitley's date.
I have a schedule of it.
And Sunderland's date. Waitley is... Sunderland is, we talked about this earlier, is the 26th. Waitley's the 27th of February, if anyone...
Because Darius can't go on the 27th.
I thought it was just a schedule that I'm looking for.
Is that sixth grade uptime that day, Darius?
I don't think he should go to the FinCons. Regina never went to the FinCons. FinCons should come here.
Yeah, but they never do.
That shows their level of interest.
Can I ask a question? Are we just waiting now at this point for...
Somebody to find the dates. The dates of what, when things are due?
The time, the budget timelines in the regional agreement. Whatever it requires of us.
It's not a timeline like I...
I see enrollment, 1956, I was one of those kids that was coming in.
Well, someone's looking, can we go on with other business here?
Why don't we?
Okay. Let's go to new business, school resource officer contract.
So last year, if you remember, I believe it was in February, we were again looking at pictures of the building. We were down in the multipurpose room. I don't know what was going on in here. But we also at that evening voted memorandum of understanding for our school resource officer. And we were... The vote came in that they would vote for it for one year. So right now we have a one-year agreement to have Brian Ravish as our school resource officer. His salary of 15,700 is in the budget we just presented. We just put that back in the budget. My understanding from reading this is that we don't necessarily need to develop a new memorandum of understanding. It will remain enforceable and effective until amended or rescinded by the parties. Bringing it to you is, the reason why we're bringing it to you tonight is because when we voted last year, I remember the statement being, well, let's vote for this year and then see about next year. So the question is, do you want to continue with this memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer? Or do you want to have a discussion and change?
I move to terminate the employment of the school resource officer. He's useless.
Why?
This is the feedback I get from...
They didn't have a discussion without a second.
Motion is to terminate the resource officers.
The motion is to... I'm sorry, I'm trying to find this.
I found it, so don't worry. I found it. So don't pay attention.
So Phil's looking for a second.
Be more specific. The motion is to take it off our budget. He's welcome to stay here.
Okay. So to remove SRO's salary.
Let's say funding, not salary.
Oh, that's right, funding.
We're not going to be able to talk about this and ask Darius if it's working unless somebody steps in motion.
I will second it for those purposes only.
There we go. Darius, how's things working out?
Very well. I would recommend that we continue the, if we're not making other cuts within the budget, that we continue the resource officer because I think year one was a learning year for him. I think year two was this past year and I think he's doing what a resource officer does. He has a relationship with students. He's doing a lot of in pushing to classrooms, health classes, the forensics class. He does AHR drivers thing as well. He's also a resource to what's going on in the community, what happens over the weekends. Kids are starting to go to him as for advice on issues going on. So I think, you know, he is a resource.
You want to fill us in what you may know or don't know or...
You know, I just, I would defer to his opinion. He knows more about it than I do. But I haven't heard anything positive other than that, so that's good.
Do you want to amend your...
Well, I would just like to note that the way that this was presented to us was that it was last year was a one-time thing. The Deerfield Academy was paying for this gentleman and that Eagle Brook was supposed to...
They pay half of it, not?
And that there was a thing that Eagle Brook had not been contacted, that Bement had... That he was supposed to work at all these places and Eagle Brook is on his route and Bement is on his route and they refused to contribute. And we were told that, I was told when I talked to him after a meeting, that he was going to knock on their doors and get them to contribute. I'd like, you know...
Do we...
The result is that we are actually subsidizing police protection for Eagle Brook and for Bement. Seriously, that's wrong.
Only if he's going there and they're not contributing. Are they not contributing and he's not going? There's a big difference between those two things.
How much time is he here?
He is here at the start of school, I'd say four or five days in a week. And then, so he does the first hour plus the school day here and we then goes over Deerfield Elementary with their drop-off. You know, it's the most... To me, I think an officer needs to be in, if you have, each building is an opening of a school day because that's when all the doors are open, that kind of stuff. Or if you're doing the safety level there. And that's when issues are going to happen from the night before. And driving issues and that kind of stuff. So from what I understand, he starts the day here, he goes over to Deerfield Elementary, continues there. He probably has a lot more business with us than he has with Deerfield Elementary, so he comes back to us on those other days. And then midday is when he goes to, I believe it was the DA. I don't know about what Eagle Brook did.
But that wouldn't, that doesn't affect our share of the MOU whether he goes to Eagle Brook and Bement or not. It's the same amount of money for us. That's the way I understood the memorandum of understanding.
Are we getting our 15,000 worth?
Yeah, I mean, I can, you know, if I can go back and ask him to give me a charting of hours, I have been overseeing it that way. You know, it's been, you know, his supervisor is the chief of police, not me. He does, we do have a very good works relationship though in the sense that we aren't stepping on each other's toes. He's respectful of, you know, there's a lot of times where people are worried about officers in the school, infringing on students' rights, overstepping the bounds, like principal brings names a student who may or may not have drugs. Does the officer step in and arrest him? No, he stays out of the room. It's a school matter until the school personnel asks him to step in. He's very respectful of those kind of, and understands those boundaries and wants those boundaries. He believes that, you know, kids make mistakes. He's not about, you know, lighting them up and throwing them in the back of the seat of the car and that kind of stuff. When students, you know, had had problems with court, we had real life issues that happened in our bubble. You don't just hear about it because they do a nice job of keeping it at the student level. A student had to be arrested, it's done quietly. You know, those kind of things are, you know, he's been a very, he's done a very good job of that. I know that some resource officers in Western Mass have had other reputations where they walk, they walk with a big stick and they demand respect and he's not that way. He wants to be part of the community. He's got a family in the building, he's got those kind of connections. So he's what we want in a resource officer. So if you want follow-up on hours here and hours there, I can ask him to throw together a little thing so that you feel comfortable with those numbers. I'm sure he wouldn't have to show where his time's being spent. Maybe we should, you know, have no problem fully accountable to that. I have not been on that up to this point, but if that's what you want me to do, I think that might be a reasonable... If people want to feel sleep better at night about how the money's going, we can find out where is his hours, what is he doing, those kind of things. I know that right now he's, he's working with Scott to do a full, the dangers of cellphones in elementary schools. And they're about to go down into the elementary school to give a training to parents because there's been an uptick in very bad behavior online with students. Snapchat and that kind of stuff really cost, those things, those stories you only read about. It's, you know, so he's doing those kind of things, educational programs. So I can kind of have him chart out, you know, what he's been doing, those goals if you want to report on that. Close him accountable.
I don't think we should micromanage him because he, you know, Darius has a relation with Scott, has a relation with, and a police chief has a relationship with him. So I mean, he can't have too many bosses.
We're not as only, people are paying him, other people are paying him.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Whether it's the town of Deerfield and DA and it's up to, you know, somebody else, hey, is he spending our time at Eagle Brook or Bement or whatever? But that's, you know, meaning...
I have no problem getting a basic schedule from him and a basic list of, you know, things he's been working on this year. If he'll share that, my principal's report the next meeting.
If, I believe that his schedule should be confidential to you because we, the public, should not know where he is at all times. Because I believe that's a safety issue. If he is here in the morning or if he's there first thing in the morning, that's between you. As long as you can come back to us and say, you know what, he's doing his job in this, I would keep all that other stuff out of our concern and anybody else's concern. Because again, we're public, this is being taken. And I think that that needs, that's one of the things that resource officers have on their side is that that confidentiality between the school and themselves where they can show up different places at different times.
What he does at Bement, Eagle Brook, or none of our business. If the three of them are holding up there, somehow or other, holding up there under the bargain, paying a part of his salary and we're paying our part.
Right.
That's not our business.
So we want to know if they're paying their part.
No, we don't.
I don't care.
As long as he's here, the percent that he needs to be here, we're fine. You can't work 29 hours.
We're not on the hook for all of it if they don't pay it.
Right, because we...
We're not on the hook for any more than we ever were.
Right. So keep it simple.
Yeah, I agree. So when I cut your answer, Patty's got to...
Let's finish this first.
We have to vote, okay?
No, you don't have to vote.
We have to vote.
Just withdraw your motion.
Withdraw your motion.
You withdraw your second, yes you do.
Do I? I don't withdraw my second, do we keep talking about it?
The one other question I had, the memorandum, it has been a problem in the past about who is the line authority to speak with the media. And the memorandum of understanding should reflect the fact that any school issue should be superintendent speaking with the media or the superintendent's designate. And in the past, we have had a problem with that not being adhered to. When the, with the bomb issue, with the bomb scare thing like five years ago, whatever, when, when a lot of people felt that the Deerfield Police Chief issued alarmist public media statements before they could get ahold of the superintendent. And again, when the thing a couple of years ago with the little, with the kid with the video game, like toy gun in the parking lot or whatever, the Deerfield Police Chief issued media statement and gave an interview before our superintendent did. And again, it was not, it's much better. And it's their own policies as well that the superintendent, so, you know, it should be in writing that... you know, it should, it should be in writing that the police department knows that, uh-
Not to step on the toes to-
That all media requests, all media discussions go through the superintendent when they involve the school.
That's, that's-
I don't know if we can do that.
That is, that is protocol.
But I don't know if we can legally bind them to that.
I don't think we can.
I don't, I don't think so either, Mass General Law is, the law enforcement is, is charged of, to proceed as, as they would, yeah.
I think that's built from a cooperation situation.
It matters to public safety, go on to the police.
Was, was that concerned, was that what negative things came from that? People going on Facebook and being upset?
He shouldn't, I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't think that the police should be out there saying, this person will be suspended for this many days.
No, no.
No, that's her job.
Right.
That there, that-
What?
That there was an incident, that's their job.
That there was factual inaccuracies in both of the statements that the super, that the police chief made.
And that could've been-
That would not have been the case if the superintendent had made them.
Phil, I don't remember what you're talking about as being an impact on the school. So whether or not they had some other website that was different than what we sent out, I don't remember it being a problem in the school. They, they just don't, I mean, I have a pretty good relationship with Chief Matur, and we work together on most things, and so, some things are criminal in nature that happen, and they answer the question regarding the criminal investigation. It's not gonna go back to superintendent to say, how is a criminal investigation going for blank right now? It doesn't, it's not, it's not her job to do that. If we had a threat in the school, we had to do an evacuation or something of that sort, you know, if you've got to commit any of those things, there's going to be a press release by the superintendent, and then there's going to be, the police are gonna have a debate, you know, sometimes the press is gonna go to them for more. You know, they have the right to do whatever, to say whatever they're doing. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we have another term.
Withdraw, Patty.
Do I, I don't, do I have to put that in the notes?
That was withdrawn.
We have to record the motion being made, and, but then they also have to record the fact that he withdrew.
So then we have to vote two or new?
Now we need to vote for a new one that's, yeah, motion?
Now, the, the thing about this is, this is what I would, I, I would advise us to do. This memorandum of understanding will remain a full force until this, either party decides to rescind it. So if we make a motion to, um, accept or continue this memorandum of understanding until we decide to rescind it, then it wouldn't come up every year. It would just be a matter of, rid of the business. Last year, it was voted on for one year, so we bring it back this year. But I would advise us to just make the motion to, um, accept the memorandum of understanding as it stated, uh, until we, as a school committee, decide to amend or rescind it.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this memorandum of understanding until we decide to rescind it.
Second?
Question? Is that a line, does that show up as a line? Okay, so we would be, it would be visible, so we could then, at some point, if we didn't, that, that could be when it came up.
Everybody else have anything on this?
That's fine.
All in favor?
I would be opposed.
Oh, okay.
Forty-five days.
Backing up.
Forty-five days, not later than March thirty-first. Depending upon forty-five days from the first town meeting.
Which is April twenty-fourth.
Okay. But at the latest, March thirty-first, but you don't have to do it anytime before February twenty-
We don't need two votes.
I'll read you the whole thing out if you-
No, don't have to.
I believe it. If the first meeting is April twenty-fourth?
Yeah, forty-five days before that.
Forty-five days, we're glad-
Okay, so, we may have a problem.
We might have a problem because forty-five days would be March tenth, we'd have to vote by March tenth, would be the forty-fifth day, and our meeting isn't till the thirteenth.
We just did it.
We just voted.
It's done.
Tentative.
There's no such thing. He doesn't ask you for a thing, doesn't tell you what kind of vote you have to have, does it?
What did you record as a vote?
Motion, uh, to tentatively adopt an operating budget of ten million and thus, plus, uh, transportation budget of two-hundred-eighty-three thousand for a total budget of eleven million plus.
Alright, so we need a motion to amend that motion, that, to adopt the budget.
Why don't we just have the-
But you normally don't do that till after your public hearing.
I was gonna say, other years we'd have that discussion. You can't vote a final budget before your public hearing.
What's the point of having a public hearing if we've already voted it?
Right.
So we're three days late.
So you're not supposed to vote it before your public hearing.
So what Patty's saying is to comply with the forty-five days, we have to do it by March the tenth?
Correct.
Okay, and when is-
So what, we don't?
Exactly. Remember violation of the agreement?
Again.
I know.
Just technically, it's not like we're-
We could move the meeting to March sixth.
We could do that. First Tuesday of the month. And then, we can have the public hearing that night also, and then vote it.
That's a good idea, Patty.
Okay, every now and then I copy. Is everybody good for March sixth?
That's the blind squirrel thing? Yes.
I, I, I would like to be in compliance as close as we can be possible with-
We'll just have to remember that.
Even though we disagree with it.
We have to remember that in the future.
To count backwards.
Well, probably, yeah.
Basically. So we need a motion to change the March thirteenth meeting to March sixth?
You're making that motion?
I, I believe I just did.
I will second that motion.
And I know if anybody has problems, you know, but this is, trying to be compliant, so hopefully everybody can make it.
So public meeting starts at six? And then our meeting starts immediately after?
Unless you wanna start at five.
I did used to, but that didn't work out.
No, I don't, I don't think you're good to town fathers along the-
No, I think six is a good time, and then we just start up immediately following.
All in favor on changing date to the sixth of March, all in favor? Have them on the minutes, make sure it's like, like highlighted, in different colors, something. Two people, well, two people aren't here tonight, and all this always thinks about the second Tuesday, so.
So maybe somebody should send them an email tomorrow, letting them know their calendars.
The budget, the, the original agreement says it has to be two-thirds vote?
I remember it used to be there, I-
It's a long agreement.
This is all, we're all in favor, so it doesn't have to worry about two-thirds.
Yeah, but if you get the wrong people missing, you're in trouble.
Because it doesn't add up the way it's operated. shall be adopted by an affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the membership of the full committee prior to February twenty-eighth.
Well, sorry, I've got my email ready to go, can I hit send?
Two-thirds of the weighted vote, or two-thirds of the? Eleven.
In March?
Two-thirds of the weighted vote, two-thirds.
Yeah, but you just voted, everybody voted yes, so isn't that three-thirds?
It, it, it has to be by forty-five days before the first town meeting.
Right.
Or March thirty-first, whichever comes first.
Does, does a vote for a tentative fill that obligation?
Two-thirds of those present in voting.
It doesn't say anything about a tentative.
I know, it doesn't say.
Here you go.
Somebody made that up.
Membership of the full committee.
It says you will adopt an annual.
Did you hear what he just read you?
Two-thirds of the membership of the full committee shall constitute a quorum of the adoption of the operating budget, and said budget shall be adopted by the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the membership of the full committee prior to February twenty-eighth. Each year, the treasurer of the committee shall certify to the treasurer of each member towns its share of such budget and its share of any installment principal and interest to become due in the ensuing year on any bond or other evidence.
But that was amended in April of ninety-seven.
Yeah, so it's not two-thirds of those there, it's two-thirds of the whole committee.
Not two-thirds of those present in voting.
So do we have two-thirds of the whole committee?
We do today.
So, yeah, so we're good. Because percentage-wise, Judy is just on this, and Davian's just on this. So neither one of them is a one.
So is that one a two?
So if they were a one, I might be worried.
Darius, you, you, you alright over there?
So does, does that mean this all?
We're saying that you play out basketball.
It doesn't say, a section, it was a numbered section, it's one, meaning-
Just make sure you reserve parking for us.
That'll be the first thing we mind.
Okay, where are we?
So, just to clarify, there was an amendment there that doesn't mention two-thirds of a vote right under there. And so, it sounds like if that's the case, it's just a majority. Um, not that we don't have those numbers here, but there is an amendment right under it that pretty much says the same thing on page thirty-four at the bottom. And we just read it, and it just says all the dates, not the required amounts.
With Bob, it was the section, uh, eleven voted on March tenth, but then that was amended, uh, in April of ninety-seven and ninety-eight, and it just, it does not mention numbers of who has, it just says that you have to have a budget forty-five days earlier to the first town meeting.
Did you read it? So, would that have just-
This is what I read to begin with, and Billy asked about the two-thirds.
Right.
But there is no two-third requirement anymore.
Goes away.
Evidently got lost in translation.
Well, we have more than two-thirds.
Okay, so can I send my email?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, uh, N E S D C report.
This is the VasDek report, I only have a handful, they were sent to you, but I'll pass them around.
They can share when I can, you got enough here?
This is really mainly-
Those two? Bill and Keith can share, no?
Okay.
Where you got them?
You got one last night, because we got, there's two, one last night. So, this is mainly for your own information. The, um, what really, it, it talks about our four towns, you know, Deerfield, Conway, uh, different trends going on in those towns, birth rates, and going up to pre-K and kindergarten. The one that I really just wanted to point out is, it's on the second, the back of the second page, and it's called the Frontier RSD Unit Thirty-eight projected enrollment. And what that will show you is where we are now at eleven hundred eighty students, and where they see us in twenty-twenty-seven, which is eleven hundred thirty-nine. So when we're looking ahead to two thousand nineteen, it looks like there might be a downward, nothing that is surprising or frightening, but it looks like we'll be, in two years, we'll be losing about twenty students, roughly, twenty, twenty-three students. And, but it's pretty, pretty solid all the way through. So where we are at eleven eighty will be at roughly eleven forty in twenty-twenty-seven. So, and then on the other side of that page, this is another way of looking at it, they give you a nice chart. So we've dropped from two thousand seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and starting about two thousand twelve, we're pretty, you know, we're going to go down a few students, but we're actually pretty stable. We're staying right where we are now, give or take thirty students. So it looks like we're pretty solid until two thousand twenty-seven.
So this is all new, this is, we were, all the projections we had seen before this were straight down. This is saying in ten years, there's, we're gonna be forty students less than right now.
They have these really incredible formulas. I took a class with, um, Don Kennedy when I was, uh, getting my superintendent certification. He, he's the one that developed these. It's a very complex formula where they do the projections. But they do look at birth rates, and you can see where it could have looked pretty dismal because up until two thousand twelve, there was a drop.
There was, you know-
Quite a drop, actually, um, from a high of fifteen hundred to now close to twelve hundred. But now we're staying in the eleven hundreds. According to this, life may throw something different at us, but it looks like between today and twenty-twenty-seven, we'll lose about forty kids.
Enrollment projections we had in feasibility studies when we rebuilt this place? Enrollment projections, we're, we're going off the charts. We're gonna have seven hundred plus kids in this building before we get it built.
Yeah, they were worried we wouldn't have a big enough building.
And then the next time-
Same outfit as it is right now.
Maybe their computer graph was a-
Essentially for your reading pleasure.
But these figures don't reflect any of the school choice kids. These are just homegrown children, pre-K through twelve, birth rates.
These are kids who haven't even been thought of yet, unlike anyone else.
Our grandchildren.
Great.
Great, great, well, in your case.
I, I, just this one page, this page, I'd like to see you have a stack of these on the table at every town meeting because, uh, because this is one of the big things, you know, you need to cut your budget because your enrollment's gonna fall off a cliff. So this is-
It doesn't-
Let's not do that then.
Exactly.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like that, does it? And, um, since, we've been stable since two thousand twelve, we're at two thousand seventeen. If you just look at this, this little, this is where, two thousand twelve, and this is two thousand seventeen, we've been stable.
But we were projected to go up at one point.
Oh, way up, way up.
So this is a bunch of numbers.
Some of our, yes, some of our schools might have gone down, but our Sunderland has come up. And we're, we're a whole group, we're four different schools.
Things like, you know, the Red Sox win the World Series the first time, it changes the whole dynamic.
That's right.
There's lots of people celebrating, so, you know, you don't know.
If it's an exceptionally cold winter.
Hey, Bob, in ten years, bring that paper back, okay, we'll take a look at it.
Forty years ago, right, you had a big blizzard. And then we changed the October one enrollment, or, or, I think it was October one, we moved it till September because it influenced the number of kids that were coming.
That was a cold winter. The winter of seventy-eight. Next. There was a lot of snow that day, where I was, we're losing Darius.
All I can tell you is, uh, there were an awful lot of-
Okay, two thousand, two thousand seventeen annual report.
So this is the annual report that goes to the towns, and I put in the towns, um, their, their town annual report. And Frontier Regionals piece, you can see, uh, all the information that's going in there. One thing that I'm especially proud of is, when I have met, I've met quite a bit with the town administrators of the four towns, and they have asked us to provide a little bit more information about the schools, more in the narrative, more information for stakeholders, taxpayers, uh, folks that aren't as familiar with the school as we are, to learn about, uh, the school, to read about. So, um, the whole administrative team got together and added parts to each of these narratives. And that would include the director of technology, the director of special ed, uh, the early elementary coordinator, the, uh, secondary education director, and the elementary education director. And I think that's it. But they all got together and did their own pieces, and then we compiled it into a great report. So this is, uh, the report, it says superintendent's report, but it's really written by all the, all the players in the school. And, uh, you can see where it's talking about Rumpkin Initiative, Capstone Program, our AP, different ways to attain AP status, PV, early release programs, extracurricular, special education, um, our staff, people coming and going, uh, definitely our special thanks to all of you and the, the staff, the dedicated staff and faculty that make Frontier Regionals who it is, which is, is a pretty excellent- that make Frontier Regional the school it is, which is a pretty excellent learning organization. Then you'll see Conway's numbers, and then Conway Grammar School, again, Kristen Gordon spearheaded this, but all of the other directors took a piece, the technology, the special education, out-of-school time program, preschool programs, and definitely our curriculum coordinators added along. And then again, you'll see Deerfield. Same difference with Deerfield. They presented a wonderful, wonderful narrative on all the initiatives going on there, and all the great ways that they communicate with their communities, and again, preschool, technology, special ed. And likewise for Sunderland. Sunderland has all that information, plus they've written about their school family partnerships, their community outreach. Again, their highly successful preschool program, and technology, PV, and then their curriculum, curriculum initiatives. And likewise with Waitley at the end of the report, and they've done a great job too with their narratives. So I'm very pleased that each of our schools have come together with our directors as a unit and compiled these great reports for the, the taxpayer that doesn't have children in the school, that's not that informed. They, they would enjoy reading about what we're doing here, our arts and our programs. So that is for you to read and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Darius from the collaborative, Bob?
Yeah, we had a meeting. There's gonna be a subcommittee on buildings and acquisition of property on Thursday morning at 9:30, an executive session. We're gonna look at addition, an additional piece of property. And one of you, you all were sent the executive director's monthly report, your annual report. It's very long, and I left a whole bunch of information for Lynn to disseminate to the proper people here at the school, relative to some of the programs that we collaborate is doing. And, you know, I figured that the stuff is just gonna go on a pile at home, so I brought it in so she can disseminate it to people that could actually use it and relate to it, so hopefully it got to people so that they can see it. Put on a beautiful presentation on, you know, cigarettes and tobacco and everything else.
Get them to buy a Blue School, they'll love it. Get them to buy the...
No, that's gonna be a... That's gonna be a pine forest.
Where to move to lately?
They'll be a box farm on the corner.
Actually, Billy, the stuff they passed, you remember when Consolidated had the backwood cigars? That was one of the packages they passed out, saying how they were so bad. And I had to tell them that my father tried those out when they were first made.
He left. Lost his chance next.
I have a question.
About the collaborative?
No, about the principals report, but he just left.
Hopefully they'll be back.
Yeah, he's got all the stuff in there.
So, the only thing I have for the superintendent's report is that Patty and I will be working next week when the students are gone, and these four nights, we're putting out four budgets this week. This is our second. Tomorrow night, of course, we have Deerfield, and then we have Conway. Once things settle down, next Tuesday, Patty and I will be working on putting the RFP out for the Blue School, and that is going to go out concurrently with, with Waitley.
We have Mr., we have Brian's piece, and what we've decided to do is put the advertisements in together so that we know that they end up together, so we'll pay for that, and then we'll bill the town of Waitley for their share of the ad, but we're gonna place both ads and, and request that they show up side by side in the advertisement section. So that'll be happening next week.
Waitley has done their piece already?
Yeah.
So we're wait, they're waiting on us?
Yeah.
I have no reason we delayed it a little bit because of budget season. That's, that's the only reason we delayed it, which was, yeah, too much. Your last, sir.
Yes, that's right, Sarah. You can fire it through the, I'm not gonna read while I'm allowed to, but basically we've entered the transition to the new season, the new year, second semester, also, you know, some students are signing up for courses. We're also starting the transition for, we had eighth grade parent night last week, which basically high school parent night, I'll put it that way, talking about what to expect in high school. We did our AP annual information night, where the teachers presented their AP courses to parents. We had a very good turnout for that, about 50-plus parents, talking about the different offerings of the upper-level courses. I've also had the first of my two coffee houses last week. I'll be honest, attendance was not great. We had about a dozen or so families there. I think last year we had about 20-something people there, so it was down a little bit. And we had a snow day in the middle of that week, so that may have caused people's schedules to get thrown out. When we come back from break, we'll have our first, well, the evening parent information night on that Tuesday, and then have another coffee in March where parents learn more about the school. Our band went out today to the elementary schools, performing in all four elementary schools to promote, along with a performance promoting participation in music. We also had two presenters from the collaborative today, working with our social justice schools. They did a presentation with the middle school students, looking at stereotypes around race, gender, class, sexual orientation, religion, immigration status, et cetera. And they did a lot of different activities, and there's gonna be a follow-up to that in the spring. In the high school, we did a smaller groups, they signed up to be a part of having dialogue, about dialogue around social justice and how people can find their inner voice on those things. And just FYI, these are things that you approved long ago, but the New Zealand trip leaves on Friday, and the Washington DC trip leaves Monday after break. So that was the speed reach of all of them.
Thank you. Any questions?
On number five, your coffee things, how do you run that? Is it, what time does it, maybe I missed that, but what time does it start? What do you serve?
So we do, we still do the, the traditional, in the evening, come, get a tour of the school. We kind of talk, we talked about it and such for about an hour and a half.
And how many people come to that?
That particular evening, we probably get, parents will get between around 60.
Okay.
So, I mean, you have to kind of, you balance it. When I look at those numbers, I'm like, if you already have a sibling in the school, many of them are not coming. So I get some flex just year to year, and then whether or not two people come for one kid, or just one person comes, so that kind of fluctuates those numbers as well. So, starting last year or the year before, I started doing coffees in the morning, so keep people who come during the school day. And, you know, let me talk a little bit for a while, let me do tours of the classes in session. And I tell the parent, they, they seem to, those who have the time to be able to do that, it's a sad choice in the morning, really enjoy it because they can see, look at the actual class sizes, look at what the kids are doing, look at the, you know, the kind of fears that they're meeting, these big scary hallways, and they're seeing transition in the classroom, like, I didn't see it this way. I didn't imagine it this way. So it really answers all those questions, and I tell, I try to do a lot of word of mouth stuff that says, if you know anybody who's considering other placement, wants to learn more, they really need to come to these coffee ones, and it's really intimate. We break up, and there's, you know, there's several of myself and Sarah's doing it, and Shelley Allen, the director of guidance, says, it's, you know, three people who really know all the ins and outs, walking with, you know, a dozen or so parents, you know, that kind of thing. So that's the two pushes, or three pushes to do. And so I mail that out, physical mail it. I email it out twice now because we had a...
But when do you do that?
So I mail out the full agenda of all the different things that are happening, and that went out in, when we came back, I believe in January. So it kind of said, these are the save the date, use the date, and then I do an email reminder blast to all the parents, and they sent the note to principals to put in their, their correspondence at home.
So my only question would be, should the save the date go out earlier? So by January, is my schedule already as a parent full, where it wouldn't be in September with all the other paperwork coming home? Save the date?
I mean, okay, I would say that, but, I would say that, but the save the date, it's the last week of February, and I sent it out in January. You know, I said it when we came back in January, so you get two months in advance notice for each school. And there's three different options of getting the information, so two coffees, so. Well, I agree on one thing, it's my other fear is that you do it too early. I guess I could say, I could say at the beginning of the year, you know.
Just, this is coming.
Right. And then, so I try to, I send the flyers to them, have the PDF attached along my emails, reminding them so they can see all the dates coming forward.
Do people have to call and make an appointment?
I ask people at RSPP by email or call Michelle, that's just to let us know that we have a conservative general idea of numbers. For the, for the coffee, for the evening.
Oh, yeah.
It's open.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to go to another one sometime?
Oh, I went to it. I, I didn't go to the coffee. I went, I was one of the parents.
Well, I would recommend it, everybody has them.
Well, they won't have the coffee.
If anybody wants to do a tour with other parents, the coffee's a great one.
10 years ago?
Yeah, I'd like to see where it was all.
I could do that if they let me out of school.
The deadline was really good. The difference is buildings, like a dark closed building versus a building alive and energetic.
Does anybody else have anything else they wanna share?
Executive session on the...
Oh my God, that's right, I'm sorry. I saw that.
He's trying. He's trying.
I saw you packing that stuff up. I got surprised for you. Okay, you want me to read it? We entered an executive session pursuant to MGL C 38, section 21A3 to discuss strategy, strategy with respect to collective bargain with the teachers' association. An open meeting may have determined effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair is so declared.
Do you have a motion to start?
We're gonna do one, or are you gonna do both?
Do you don't wanna come out and go back in?
No.
You don't wanna go out?
We're gonna go into executive session once, then handle two and five.
Enter the executive session pursuant of MGL section 3, C 38, section 21A3 to discuss strategies with respect to litigation. Open meeting may have a determined effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair is so declares.
There's a motion to go into executive session.
Who do we wanna stay?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
We need to record in the minutes who's, who we need to stay, like...
You need Darius?
Yes, and myself.
And Patty?
I know.
Do we need the union?
Executive.
Do we want the union?
She's already aware.
I know, she wants to, already I told her. We don't need the union.
We're gonna...
Don't need the union.
Okay.
Wanna do a roll call?
Roll call, Keith?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Sidney?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.